Good morning. So this morning, we're going to have a parade-induced schedule, which means we will get through this as soon as possible. Everyone will take their seats, and the visitors retire behind the rail. We will get started. Have a little quiet, please, so we can do our invocation. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Monsinger Peter Waslow, Chaplain of the Manor College. He is here today as a guest of Councilman Al Taubenberger. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise. Monsinger.
As we gather here today, we ask the good Lord to bless the work to be undertaken for the good of the citizens of Philadelphia. May the deliberations and votes be a reflection of the dignity of each person who live, work, and play here. We pray for those here in chamber. May they, as stewards of Philadelphia, be ever mindful the trust given to them as they represent the people they serve. And may this day, as all days, be blessed and fruitful, so this city may be a true reflection of your love. And as an aside, we give thanks as we celebrate Villanova's NCAA championship. We ask that you keep the ball rolling, and may the Phillies win their opener today. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Monsinger. Counsel, be at ease. Thank you. We're going to proceed. Folks, could you... Folks, folks, could you please stop... Please stop talking. Thank you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 22, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 22, 2018, be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved to Prop. 2, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 22, 2018. Stand and approve, all those in favor. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. This time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who is brave, detraffed, to come down to witness the government in action. And we hope that your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but so, more so, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you for being here today. Counselman, Speaker, sir, my friend, Denny O'Brien, how you doing today? We'll now move on to our next order of business, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Homero Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 1-800-99, 1-80101, 1-80135, 1-80137, 1-80169, 1-80171, 1-80172, 1-80173, and 1-80216. And I'm pleased to advise you that on March 23, 2018, I signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at its session on March 22, 2018, Bill Number 171109A. And that on April 4, 2018, I signed the following bills, which were passed by Council at its session on March 22, 2018, Bill Numbers 1-80012 and 1-80170. And I am submitting here with, for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 726 Emily Street, located in the 1st Council Manic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3250 Hartville Street, located in the 7th Council Manic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 415 West Burke Street, 417 West Burke Street, and 419 West Burke Street, located in the 7th Council Manic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2210 Latona Street, located in the 2nd Council Manic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 119 West Cumberland Street, located in the 7th Council Manic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1252 North 25th Street, located in the 5th Council Manic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2549 South Third Street, located in the 1st Council Manic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1936 North Marshall Street, located in the 5th Council Manic District. And a resolution appointing Lynette Brown-Sow to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority. And a resolution approving the action of the Boards of the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development to sell property at 7411 Holstein Avenue in the Eastwick Urban renewal area, Stage A industrial, containing approximately three acres to YD Real Estate Development, or its assignee or nominee. And a resolution confirming the reappointment of the Honorable Phyllis W. Beck as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve on the term ending November 16, 2022. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of the relocated southeasterly local service roadway of Penrose Avenue from 26th Street to a point approximately 1,323 feet southwestwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 72 by relocating the southeasterly house line and curb line of a portion of Carson Street between Baker and Silverwood Street, thereby widening said Carson Street and a portion of the cartway thereof. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers 34S and 41S by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of Packer Avenue from Christopher Columbus Boulevard to the Pierhead Line of the Delaware River. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers 52S and 53S in the area lying southeast of Penrose Avenue and southwest of 26th Street by striking from the city plan and vacating any regularly shaped portion of the right-of-way of Penrose Avenue along the southeasterly side thereof, relocating a portion of the southeasterly local service roadway of Penrose Avenue from 26th Street to a point southwestwardly therefrom, and placing on the city plan a right-of-way, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, sir. We will now move to our next order of business, introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, today I offer four resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating Women Organized Against Rape and its 2018 Wear Teal Day kicking off Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
And that will be on today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution honoring Ayana Van Zant's life and accomplishments and contributions to the fields of spirituality and personal development.
Today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution. And a privileged resolution congratulating the Penn State University Nittany Lions Men's Basketball Team for their championship victory in the 2018 National Invitational Tournament.
Today's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution urging the President of the United States and the Environmental Protection Agency to recommit to the Obama-era rules for U.S. automakers on greenhouse gas emissions.
And today's calendar. Next week? That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce two bills and two nonprivileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thanks.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by University Avenue, Schuylkill Expressway Ramp, 34th Street, Schuylkill River Graves Ferry Avenue, and Railroad Right-of-Way.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania to install on and maintain various encroachments at One Convention Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the legacy of Winnie "Midi" Kizela Mandela, the mother of the nation of South Africa, for her lifelong activism in fighting for the equal treatment of her people.
This week's calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing the Greater Philadelphia Cultural Inclusion and Linguistic Diversity Initiative, a new organization that seeks to provide support to L, ESL, ELL, ESL, and special needs students.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, on your behalf, I offer one bill and I offer two resolutions, one of them on your behalf, the other co-sponsored with Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Counselman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Gerard Avenue, Broad Street, Fairmount Avenue, and Corinthian Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution proclaiming April 10, 2018, as equal payday in Philadelphia.
And this week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1936 North Marshall Street, located in the 5th Council Manic District.
And that will be on next week's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one privileged resolution and two resolutions on your behalf. My resolution is co-sponsored by Councilmen Swilla, Don Parker, Taubenberger, and O'Neil.
Thank you, Counselman.
Sorry, thank you.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the career and legacy of Ron Rubin for his commitment and service throughout his long tenure with the Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust.
This week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution appointing Lynette Brown-Sow to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Municipal Authority.
And refer to committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution confirming the reappointment of the Honorable Phyllis Beck as a member of the Board of Ethics.
And also refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have one privileged and one nonprivileged... No, one bill and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 72 by relocating the southeasterly house line and curb line of a portion of Carson Street between Baker Street and Silverwood Street, thereby widening said Carson Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Alisia Conquest, Karen Epps, Heather LaPera, Peter Metringa, and Rebecca Yakker for their outstanding work as teachers in the 4th Council District and for being awarded the 2018 Lindbeck Foundation Award for Distinguished Public Teachers.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have three bills, two nonprivileged resolution, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers 52S and 53S in the area lying southeast of Penrose Avenue and southwest of 26th Street. And an ordinance legalizing an existing building and awning encroachment at 2101 Reed Street. And an ordinance authorizing the paving of the relocated southeasterly local service roadway of Penrose Avenue from 26th Street to a point approximately 1,333, 23 feet southwestwardly therefrom.
Those three bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution celebrating the 70th anniversary of the foundation of the State of Israel.
This week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2210 Latona Street, located in the 2nd Council Manic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution approving the action of the Boards of the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development to sell a property at 7411 Holstein Avenue in the Eastwick Urban Renewal Area, Stage A industrial, containing approximately three acres to YD Real Estate Development, or its assignee or nominee.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution and three nonprivileged.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance and the Department of Human Services for their partnership and commitment to brain healing and justice to victims of child sexual abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring April 2018 to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 415 West Burke Street, 417 West Burke Street, and 419 West Burke Street, located in the 7th Council Manic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 119 West Cumberland Street, located in the 7th Council Manic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3250 Hartville Street, located in the 7th Council Manic District.
Also next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution declaring April National... Declaring April National Minority Health Month and recognizing the Office of Minority Health for its efforts towards healthy health parity.
And that will be on this week's calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Law and Government to hold hearings on the Decennial 2020 Census.
And that will also be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three privileged resolutions, two co-sponsored by all members of council, and one co-authored by both Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and me. And I would like to be recognized to make some brief comments relative to the Limb Loss Awareness Month.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing April as Limb Loss Awareness Month.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say a special thank you to Frank Schaller, who is here from the 9th Council Manic District. He is a resident on the 600 block of Madeary Avenue. And Frank's 94-year-old aunt became a double amputee two-plus years ago due to a traumatic accident, and this put his family on the fast track for care and rehab education. Now, for those of you who can see him, you will see Frank is donned out in his orange vest and tie, and orange is the color of the Amputee Coalition of Americas campaign. And it's an educational and advocacy group near Washington, DC, and it has been a phenomenal resource for Frank and his family. The Coalition declares April Limb Loss Awareness Month and encourages its members to be more active in April than in all of the other 11 months. And Frank, I want to say, had it not been for you, we wouldn't be doing this today. So thank you for educating us about the importance of recognizing Limb Loss Awareness Month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and that will be on this week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the life and legacy of Linda Brown, symbol of the landmark desecration case.
And that will be on this week's calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Quaker City Alumni, Philadelphia Alumni, and Valley Forge Alumni Chapters on the occasion of Delta Youth Day at Philadelphia City Council.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution, co-sponsored... Sponsored by all members of council, but co-sponsored by council members Heenan, Taubenberger, Parker, Reynolds Brown, Green, and O. I'd like to speak on it for a moment.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the month of April as Financial Literacy Month in the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Very quickly, I just want to say, financial literacy month's important, but more important to me, and we've been talking about this, is the school district gets the message that our expectation is to teach personal financial literacy pre-K through 12. If we're going to make this investment, we want to see that happen in the school district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselman, and that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McGee.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged and one nonprivileged resolution, and I want to thank my co-sponsors, Green, Reynolds Brown, and Parker.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of April 8 through 14, 2018, as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week, to encourage citizens to assist crime victims and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives.
This week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution urging Congress to pass H.R. 669 and S. 200, the Restricting First Use of Nuclear Weapons Act of 2017, which would prohibit the President of the United States from launching a nuclear first strike without a congressional declaration of war.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Morning, Council President and colleagues. I have three privileged resolutions, co-sponsored by all members of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution. Honoring and recognizing Coach Jay Wright and the Villanova University Men's Basketball Team on winning the 2018 NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship, crushing Michigan with a 17-point win and a final score of 79 to 62.
And that will be on this week's calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings on Germany's dual vocational system and to discuss the impacts a German apprenticeship-style program would have on the youth of Philadelphia and industry in the area.
And this week's calendar?
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Brinkman's Bait and Tackle Shop and the Brinkman family for their 56 years of business ownership, community work, and commitment to their customers before their retirement.
And it will also be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President, for one bill.
Thank you, Counselman.
And ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Red Lion Road from Jamison Avenue to Northeast Avenue.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Swilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and two nonprivileged resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman.
And ordinance legalizing an existing building encroachment and a proposed building encroachment at 1332 Reed Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers 34S and 41S by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of Packer Avenue from Christopher Columbus Boulevard to the Pierhead Line of the Delaware River.
Refer to committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2549 South Third Street, located in the 1st Council Manic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 726 Emily Street, located in the 1st Council Manic District.
Also next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Conlon Street from Worcester Street to North 21st Street eastbound.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code and title zoning and planning by amending the one-year rule modifying certain public notice requirements and making related changes.
Also refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and then next order of business is reports on committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Committee of Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, to which is referred Bill Number 170956, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 17 through 1300 of the Philadelphia Code and titled Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage and Benefit Standard by revising provisions regarding waivers of minimum wage requirements. Respectfully reports, it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Bill Number 170956 will be placed on the first reading calendar for the next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee of Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill Number 1-80215, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 6, 800 of the Philadelphia Code and titled Lead Paint Disclosure, to clarify an existing requirement that, as a condition of licensing family-child daycare facilities built before March 1978, that such facilities be certified as lead-safe or lead-free. Respectfully reports, it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 1-80215.
Thank you. It is moved properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 1-80215. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports on committee. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that those bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have as a first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar today, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars... numbers... calendars. Bill Numbers 1-80097, 1-80101, 1-80135, 1-80137, 1-70901, 1-71111, 1-80002, 1-80096, 1-80138, 1-8... and 1-80139. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. It is moved a second that the rules of council be suspended so to permit the use of a consent agenda. Consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions of bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 1-80265, 1-80268, 1-80271, 1-80277, 1-80278, 1-71110. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Counselman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. I want to thank you very much for your compliance with our rules and regulations regarding public comment. Mr. Decker, please read the first name on the witness list.
Peter Winslow, commenting on 1-60248.
Morning.
Good morning. President Clark and members of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. I speak in favor and support of Resolution 160248 introduced by council members Henin and O'Neill. For, I'm the president of the Free Loan Association for Germantown, and I work in conjunction with Germantown United, CDC and other organizations within the communities of the Northwest to promote startup businesses. And startup businesses need all the help that they can get, and we appreciate that this is recognized by, by council. I support this, this resolution. I, I must contrast my support for this resolution to my dismay for a perfidious resolution, Resolution 180266, that was also introduced by Councilwoman Henin, that had the effect of supporting a settlement agreement between the Environmental Protection Agency and Philadelphia Energy Solutions in an action for bankruptcy in Chapter 11 before the United States Bankruptcy Court and the District of Delaware. I don't think that the council members understood what they were doing. There certainly was no opportunity for public comment. There was no consultation with people within the environmental community who are knowledgeable about the issues involved.
Mr. Winslow, is that on the agenda today?
I beg your pardon?
Is that issue on the agenda today?
I, I am contrasting it, this resolution to another resolution that was entered by Councilwoman Henin. If I'm out of order, I will stand down.
No, I'm just, is it, did you segue in it with a same subject matter? Because that's what people have been doing.
I have segwayed into another subject matter, that's true.
Okay.
Okay. And the other subject matter is that the council has made itself complicit in the efforts of the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Justice, or the Trump Administration to gut the environmental laws of this country. The effect of, of the settlement agreement, which is not legal, there is no authority within the U.S. Code for the Justice Department to give a waiver, such as they are doing in this case. And it, there is a legal brief from the Clean Air Council that I can share and have shared this, in fact, with all members of council, and an email that I sent to every member of council earlier this week that details the, the reasons why this is an illegal action. The effect of this is to gut the Renewable Fuel Standards Program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well.
Frank Schaller, commenting on Councilwoman Parker's limb loss resolution introduced today.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Frank Schaller, and I'm here as, pardon me, to speak in support of the resolution introduced by Councilwoman Parker, recognizing April as Limb Loss Awareness Month. On behalf of the Amputee Coalition of America, orange is a theme color. We are grateful to Councilwoman Sherrell Parker and her staff for introducing, and to City Council for considering this important resolution, which brings attention to a growing health problem in our country: amputations. Philadelphia's City Council will be an inspiration to other cities and states to follow Philadelphia City Council's lead in raising public awareness of limb loss and babies born with limb differences so that our society can and will provide for their needs, incorporate them into daily living, and work toward increasing education for prevention of amputations. An outstanding resource is the website amputecoalition.org. With sincere heartfelt gratitude, we thank you all.
Thank you so much for your testimony, sir.
Joe Dennehy, commenting on 180265 and 180096.
Morning.
Morning. This is an official decree of the people of Redman Damasko. A warrant, telling as such, requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council mayor and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Last me, council was honoring someone from Brazil for standing up to Brazilian civil rights violating government. Meanwhile, real constituents in Philadelphia are being removed from their homes and neighborhoods while their elected representatives refuse their sworn duty to provide immediate remedy. Your constituents did not consent to, for you to ignore lead in school drinking water or steal homes. Your constituents do not authorize council mayor and others to become the legalized version of the criminals, as Jefferson stated. People sent a clear message in 2016 that violating the people is not allowed. Laws are like bibles. Unless they are followed, nothing changes. As public servants, you cannot violate oath, constitution and law without penalty. How can agents and agencies steal my home without compensation, due process, or Seventh Amendment, trial by jury? Why has no official demanded that the Attorney General investigate and prosecute as required by law? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of all, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 982, 983, 985, 986, 987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitutional Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26 P.A. CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter of government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act, any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution and laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath, constitutional law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Madeline Shakumba, commenting on 170901.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to talk on behalf of the LUP bill. We wish to thank council for unanimously passing this bill. By doing so, you have eliminated many people from becoming homeless in 2023 when the LUP was planned to be. In terms of income, would have been released off a LUP and ended up probably homeless. And this is why I wish to thank council for passing this bill and raising the income level from 120% to 150%, where originally it was. So we give thanks to you for passage of this bill.
Thank you for your testimony.
Jennifer Bennett.
Mr. Bill.
Commenting on 180096.
Good morning. I'm here to oppose that the bill went.
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, Jennifer Bennett, from North 19th Street, North Philadelphia. So the day that this bill was originally introduced, on February 15, 2018, I sat in a board of commissioners meeting at PHA, where Ms. Blackwell also hovers over the board of commissioners meetings month after month, and she was recognized for introducing this bill. And then the CEO of PHA, Calvin Jeremiah, also asked her, would she next, asked, propose some legislation for the city to help fund the PHA Police Department, while our own police department is suffering? Then throughout the remainder of the meeting, I have photos in my phone and on my sign of councilwomen Blackwell and Calvin Jeremiah sat like this, envelopes were exchanged. There, there is corruption, and Ms. Blackwell has an interest with PHA that she should not have, and I oppose this bill, and I would recommend that an investigation be launched into the interest between.
What exactly, yeah, hold on one second. What exactly is the bill?
The tax exemption for PHA with PLPs. I think it's just inappropriate, and it's just, it's just interest, it's, it's corruption's behind, it's, it's a lot of corruption behind a lot of this stuff that's going on with Ms. Blackwell and PHA. And I mean, something needs to be done about it. She's selling the people out, selling the people out of the communities, out giving them in the domain. She, she's not even on the board, but she sits in all these meetings, and she receives envelopes and all these recognition, like all kinds of recognition and stuff like that. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Mr. President, oh, I wish I had all these envelopes, for real, for real. But I have no idea to what she refers. As you know, I go to PHA meetings, albeit I'm not on PHA because I still have the interest, and the last mayor said an elected official couldn't be on them. Now, I will say, a lot of people think, because we have the Lucchini-Blackwell homes, that I own them, and unfortunately, I don't own them either. So I'm just a poor government worker, trying to do the best I can. I have no idea to what she refers. I'm always happy to talk to anybody at the council if she'd like. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. That's it.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session. We, we will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Decker to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number 180097, entitled an ordinance to amend the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania and to approve the proposed addition to 3620 Locust Walk. And Bill Number 180101, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land within an area bounded by Silverwood Street, Gay Street, Baker Street and Carson Street, and to adopt the master plan for the former St. Mary of the Assumption Catholic Church and adjacent parcels. And Bill Number 180135, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by adding a new section, 14521, entitled STM, St. Mary's Master Plan Overlay. And Bill Number 180137, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Adams Avenue, Tabor Avenue, Harrison Street, Whittaker Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard, Bingham Street, East Only Avenue, North Front Street, Nidraw Avenue, Hammond Avenue and Crescentville Road. And Bill Number 170901, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 193900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owner Occupants of Residential Properties to Extend the Availability of Exemptions and Making Related Changes. And Bill Number 171111, entitled an ordinance constituting the 20th supplemental ordinance to the Restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989 is supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax exempt or taxable water and wastewater revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds. And Bill Number 180002, entitled an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code by providing for the reimbursement of filing fees for parking ticket appeals. And Bill Number 180096, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 191400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax by excluding from the tax a transfer of property between the Philadelphia Housing Authority, PHA, and a Pennsylvania Limited Partnership, PLP, whose general partner, PHA, owns and controls, and a transfer of property from PHA or a PHA-controlled PLP to a wholly-owned subsidiary of PHA. And Bill Number 180138, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes Regarding Terms of Payment Agreements. And Bill Number 180139, entitled an ordinance amending Section 191806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to revise the timing of the determination of assessed value, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, shall the bill pass finally? The clerk shall call on the roll, and upon it called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunean Sanchez. Aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. A majority of all members having voted in affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second final and passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180265.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey conditional free simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements around situated in the 43rd ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180265 is approved. Mr. Decker, 180268.
A resolution also naming the 5300 block of Diamond Street as Dorian Dumas Way to recognize, honor and celebrate the legacy of Dorian Dumas, whose life was tragically cut short in a fatal motorcycle accident.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved a property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180268 is approved. Mr. Decker, 180271.
A resolution recommending that the United States Postal Service select Alpha Kappa Alpha founder Ethel Hedman-Lyle for inclusion in his commemorative postage stamp collection.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180271 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180277.
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Insurance Commissioner to begin an immediate investigation to ascertain how much of insurance companies' tax cuts should be passed on to consumers in the form of lower rates.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
I approve the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 180277 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180278.
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission to investigate how much of utility companies' tax cuts should be passed on to consumers in the form of lower rates.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Aye.
It's been moved a property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180278 is adopted, and I believe we have the bill up for amendment. Mr. Decker, would that be 171110?
An ordinance constituting the 21st supplemental ordinance to the Restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989 is amended and supplemented, providing for certain amendments to the general ordinance.
That would be, who's on the amendment? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 171110. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved a property second. That amendment to 171110 be adopted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. The amendment to 171110 is approved, and 171110 will be placed on our second final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and celebrating women organized against rape and its 2018 Where Teal Day kicking off Sexual Assault Awareness Month, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved a property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Ianya Van Zant's life, accomplishments and contributions to the fields of spirituality and personal development, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
You're welcome. It's been moved a property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating the Pen. And a resolution congratulating the Penn State University Nittany Lions Men's Basketball Team for their championship victory in the two thousand and eighteen National Invitational Tournament, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilman Squilla gives that a super endorsement.
Yeah, our state's on a roll. Uh, second? All right. Uh, it's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the legacy of Winnie Medikazella Mandela, the mother of the nation of South Africa, for her lifelong activism in fighting for the equal treatment of her people, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank everyone for their support, and I move for the adoption.
Second.
Been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Greater Philadelphia Cultural Inclusion and Linguistic Diversity Initiative, a new organization that seeks to provide support to ELL, ESL, and special needs students, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming April tenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Equal Pay Day in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Greenlee.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the career and legacy of Ron Rubin for his commitment and service throughout his long tenure with the Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust and for his dedication to developing vibrant communities in Philadelphia and the greater Delaware Valley, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Move for the adoption. Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Alessia Conquest, Karen Epps, Heather LaPera, Peter Metranga, and Rebecca Yakker for their outstanding work as teachers in the fourth council district and for being awarded the two thousand and eighteen Lindback Foundation Award for Distinguished Public Teachers, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution celebrating the seventieth anniversary of the foundation of the State of Israel, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, that is sponsored by Councilwoman Sherrell Parker, Councilman Alan Dow, Councilman O'Neal. I move for the adoption of the resolution, and it's signed by all members of council.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance and the Department of Human Services for their partnership and commitment to bring healing and justice to victims of sexual abuse in Philadelphia and declaring April two thousand and eighteen to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Kuna Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kuna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring April National Minority Health Month and recognizing the Office of Minority Health for its efforts towards health parity, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Law and Government to hold hearings on the dicennial twenty-twenty census, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. On February twenty-second of this year, this body passed a resolution urging our Commerce Secretary, Wilbur Ross, to adopt the report from the U.S. Conference of Mayors in reference to the twenty-twenty census. One of the aspects of that report was concern by mayors all across this nation that a citizenship question would be included in the census. The concern is that historically, we've had people of color and other organizations of people have been underrepresented in the census, and having a citizenship-type question would have a chilling effect on people throughout this country. It was very important that we do not include that language in the census. Unfortunately, the Commerce Department, under Secretary Ross's direction, did not decide not to follow in that direction and are including that language in the upcoming census. And this is going to have a major impact, not only in cities around the nation, but also here in the city of Philadelphia. The census, as many people know, is used for how we do a number of things, from redistricting to funds being allocated at the federal level. For example, community develop block grants. Just two weeks ago, Congress passed an increase in the CWG funds from three-point-one billion to three-point-three billion. And we have an undercount in the city of Philadelphia, those are less dollars that we will receive. So just in the past couple of days, our Attorney General Josh Shapiro announced that he will be joining a lawsuit filed by Attorney Generals in New York and California to challenge the Trump administration on using this language in the twenty-twenty census. Mayor Kenny and Attorney General Josh Shapiro did a joint op-ed this week talking about that issue. And so it's important that we have hearings on the upcoming census. The previous administration actually put together a nonprofit to actually work on increasing an outreach and information regarding the census and let people know what the impact of the census will have on the city of Philadelphia. So we'll be looking at what happened during another administration in the twenty-ten census and as we prepare for twenty-twenty. And with that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing April as Linn Loss Awareness Month, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the life and legacy of Linda Brown, symbol of the landmark desegregation case, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated's Quaker City Alumni, Philadelphia Alumni, and Valley Forge Alumni chapters on the occasion of Delta Youth Day at Philadelphia City Council, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Soror Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown and I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the month of April as Financial Literacy Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the week of April eighth through fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week, to encourage citizens to assist crime victims and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives, introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those, Councilwoman, you want to speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah?
No.
Yeah, okay. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have official business outside of City Hall and would like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The record shall reflect that. Thank you.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Coach Jay Wright and the Villanova University Men's Basketball Team on winning the two thousand and eighteen NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship, crushing Michigan with a seventeen-point win and a final score of seventy-nine to sixty-two, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings on Germany's dual vocational system and to discuss the impacts a German apprenticeship-style program would have on the youth in Philadelphia and industry in the area, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Brinkman's Bait and Tackle Shop and the Brinkman family for their fifty-six years of business ownership, community work, and commitment to their customers before their retirement, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. It's my pleasure and honor to serve as Chair of the Global Opportunities Committee, and as such, I wanted to just note that today, Made in Jamaica is having its international awards tonight at Estia Restaurant. Four distinguished awardees, one of which is Councilwoman Janie Blackwell. And so tonight at Estia Restaurant, fourteen-oh-five Locust Street, six to nine P.M. It's a fundraiser to support youth, particularly those underserved kids coming from the Caribbean, and many of whom participate in the Penn Relays. So congratulations to Councilwoman Blackwell. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilwoman. It's free food?
Yes.
Yeah? Just checking. Just checking. Speech is on behalf of the majority, and Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.[1578.16]